My computer. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is being recorded. And we've called it to order and I'm asking for any public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Okay, hearing none. I have a very brief chairman's report. I know that Greg has some comments during his time administrator's report tonight about tomorrow's election. And I would encourage all who are participating tonight and anyone who is listening to this on tape to go to memorial school. It's a very important election in terms of town offices. In both the school committee and the select board, we have contested seats and and also the question concerning whether to move to regional dispatch or not. So look forward to seeing you at the polls tomorrow. First agenda item. And I'm looking for someone from the planning board.
So they were, they had a meeting at 5:30. They might be running a little late would be my guess.
Well. Well.
Senator.
That's a long wait for the second item on our agenda. This is where timings come in as their guideline for people to come in and be here when their item might come up rather than having to wait through a whole meeting for it. But they also are restriction on the board. We could move to the consent agenda, which is an untimed item. And there are two items on the consent agenda. One is a request from Bella Wright for a rally for reproductive rights on May 22nd from Mascanoma Park to Town Hall. And there's also the approval of minutes for April 4th and 18th. So we don't have the 18th. So that's, that's true. We did not get the 18th. So the 18th is going to be pulled out of that. This is hopefully the final time that we'll see the the minutes on the fourth. I hope that you've got your comments in for any edits that you needed. I so if there is any comments or questions regarding either of those two items, please let me know.
Jeff.
If I may, you're here. And if you'd like to talk a little bit about this rally that you proposed, that would be great. And that would help the board to make a more informed decision.
Sure. Yeah. So basically, we would start out in Mascanoma Park. We would have about four people speak. They're going to be highlighting the like class disparity in this problem of reproductive rights. And then it was started 11 o'clock and then we would walk up to the town hall and we would protest there in front of the library in the town hall until about two. And we would have opportunities for donation. Obviously, like we would be very peaceful and yeah, not super complicated.
Okay, and this is something that you personally organized, correct?
Yeah, me and about I, I, it was my idea, but then I reached out on social media to see if other people were interested. So there's about like 11 other people who are helping organize.
Wonderful. And how many people are you expecting?
I'm not sure. The last protest that I organized was a Black Lives Matter protest back in 2020, summer 2020. And I think there was estimated about 300 people there, but I'm not expecting that many for this one, just because it's not summer yet. And yeah, the energy around it is like slightly lower than it was during the Black Lives Matter movement.
Okay, and this is scheduled for 5:22. That's a Sunday, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and it starts when?
11 o'clock.
Okay, so from 11 o'clock until 2 o'clock, you said?
Yeah, we might clear out a little bit before too, but just allowing that time slot.
Okay. Any questions to the board for Bella?
Okay.
Hi Bella. Well done. I wanted to ask, it says that you'll be going from Mascanoma to Town Hall. Have you contacted the police regarding any coverage that might be needed in terms of going from Masco to Town Hall?
Yes, I have. They were supportive and they said that they would just show up and make sure that like everything traffic wise was good, but they didn't seem to need to be there for any other reason.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so those are the only two items on our consent agenda. Can I get a motion? For the consent agenda.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Becky and seconded by John round. Roll call vote. Anne Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Bowling, Eli Bowling.
Yes.
Becky Jakes.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you Bella and thank you for following through. She contacted me a little bit ago. And she followed through and I'm really glad that she's doing this and I hope to be there myself.
So much.
Okay. We now have the wonderful planning board representative, the vice chair of the planning boards, Sarah Hammond Creighton. Are you ready to go, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. We were really good at lip reading that first word, but I think it'd be tough after that.
Yeah.
Okay, so Sarah's gonna take us through the zoning amendments that are being advanced for the special time meeting on June 11th afternoon at 1 o'clock. And I will hand over the floor to Sarah and let you go ahead.
Okay, I, the other board members are joining us, I think, little by little here. We just got out of another meeting. So Chris is gonna jump in as well. This is the presentation we almost, almost done presentation for tomorrow night's hearing. So forgive any type of, if I could share my screen, that would be great. Greg, so the, as you know, the board has been working on improving clarity, getting things in compliance with case law, removing redundant sec session sections. We hired Mark Bobrowski, who's a experienced land use attorney who advised us. But we then took his work and have spent the last eight months, more than that, working through section by section. And I think our mantra is let's not feel that the perfect be the enemy of the good. We know that parts of this are perfect, but not all of it. And so we hope that this moves us forward.
Anytime you want to share your screen, you're okay.
Okay, Chris, you're here. I see you. So so and other members of the board, if you want to jump in for clarity as well, we're gonna just run through this and not necessarily, we'll take a couple of breaks to get your comments, but this is not really a public hearing. We certainly invite you to come tomorrow night or to let us know your comments. Also, so the, I think you, that's the intro for people in the public hearing. We've made changes in consultation with the land use attorney, as I said, and the full drafts are online. Some things, some of the changes that we are proposing in the bylaws are administrative changing changes and the things we're calling out in this presentation tonight and tomorrow night are those that are substantive. But we certainly are happy to take comments on any of the things. The zoning changes are, and I'm gonna add in a screenshot so people can be more easily find them when they go to that link. I don't have it in this presentation yet. I'm just gonna walk you through section by section, what we're doing. And then Chris will tell you the rationale. I think the first section one is just to revise some vague language, basically on Mark Bobrowski's suggestions, as well as add procedures for the approval of amendments. Section two is a much expanded set of definitions, mostly developed by Mark. Adding in some, we also moved definitions from the body of the zoning bylaw to the definition section. Although if definitions remain in the body, the body of the bylaw would predominate, or whatever the right word is, if there's conflict. So everything is gathered together. We've added new definitions for affordable housing, dwelling types and senior housing, more on that in a minute. And definitions of lot width is now simpler and clearer, but other than that, pretty straightforward. Section three is defines the districts. We have a new, spiffy new zoning map, but it doesn't change the districts. It's just now readable, which is a good step. The only substantive change, which is really not substantive, we took District D, which has a lengthy narrative describing it. Two parts of District D, two geographic areas of District G. And so we're actually calling them residential district one and residential district two, but there's no substantive change. It's just we've made it much clearer. There's clarity about the lot lines and what happens if a lot is in multiple districts. And like I said, updated the zoning map. There's a graphic image of it. So as I said, the current zoning map in the zoning bylaw is illegible. And then section four is currently includes a lengthy narrative as well as some special districts for flood control and flood plain and groundwater overlay. Actually, I think that got added since I last saw this. Those are now in a different section. Those are now in section nine or 11, 10. So that, that bullet is incorrect. The big check change in section four is that there's a comprehensive table which defines the uses in each district. A table is a best practice that most towns are using. And we've actually had a version of the table on our website and asked people for comments for months and have heard nothing. So hopefully that's a good sign. I made a few minor changes, particularly to some use, some accessory uses, more really for clarity and consistency. And the really only biggest substantive changes that we're proposing that swimming pools be allowed as a right if a specific criteria is met. So the, here's an example of one page of the zoning table. So it shows the residential use and in the columns are the red, the sections, and I can see a typo there, but the, it gives you the sense that it's quite skimmable. It shows if it's yes, no, or if a special permit is required, whether that's by the ZBA or the planning board. So I'm gonna turn it just, Chris, do you want to, oh, let me just finish with this. Swimming pools. We're proposing that instead of a special permit by the ZBA, that the building inspector can grant a permit if the lot and lot coverage are conforming and it's allowed within setbacks should be a yes, sorry, and it has to be fenced and landscape to screen visibility is encouraged. And it's allowed within setbacks by special permit in the current. I'm sorry, this is still a draft. Anyway, Chris, I'm gonna turn it over to you to just give the rationale for sections one through four. I'll stop sharing for a second.
Okay, thanks. So I guess the important thing that we need to think about in terms of zoning regulations is that they are not prescriptive. They are regulatory. And I'm going to give you an example of prescriptive versus regulatory, so you understand. And this is, I think, a common misunderstanding amongst a lot of people. If the zoning were to say that everyone in the general district had to have a red house or could build, I'm sorry, could build a red house. That does not mean that all the houses in the general district are going to be red. It's an allowed use, but not a required use. And, and I think that's an important distinction that we need to keep in mind as we go through these. The, and the first four, the first four sections that we changed really are just for clarity. There's no no major changes in any of our policy here. And we're just trying to make it clearer and easier to understand. And on that note, I guess we should open it up for any comments or questions from the board.
Okay, I would prefer that people raise their hands if they had a comment or question, and this would be board only or select board only.
I think so. Otherwise, we're gonna turn this into a public hearing.
We're not going to do that because it hasn't been, it hasn't been advertised as a public here.
Okay.
I have a question, which is, Sarah, can you go back to the table shot that you had, the sample table? Where it says yes, that's pretty clear. Where it says no, does that mean that that's a prohibited use and you cannot get a special permit for it?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
And there, the narrative of the proposed section explains that.
Okay.
It says what this code is. This is just an illustration.
Okay, and I assume that all the different ones and twos and sixes and sevens, et cetera, are all footnoted at the bottom of the tables.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
This is great. I, I know, I know that you've been doing this. I've seen other drafts of this and I think it's a wonderful way to help people get a quick read on, this is my problem. This is where I see it. And, and and now I know I have to go complain because it says yeah. But I it's, it's really, I think, very, very, very good to get that visual in there. Mr. Bowling, you had your hand up.
Oh, what? No, I take it back. I'm all right. Never mind.
Okay.
All right, well, we can come back to it. So in the interest of time, yeah, the notes are basically all the narrative that is in the current, I should have said that, the, the notes shown here and here are the narrative that's in the current bylaw. So it really doesn't change any of it. It just makes it significantly easier to read. And I did, just going back to allowed within the setbacks, no, swimming pools are not allowed within the setbacks. I was you know, if you're in, if you're, if you have a side setback, you can't put a swimming pool in that unless you go get a special permit. Section five is no changes of dimensional requirements. That is where we define setbacks and frontage and so forth. Section six. I'm doing a couple of things here.
I may, Sarah, Jeff, sorry. John has his hand up. Jeff.
Okay, I, I'll take your question, John, but then once Sarah gets going again, I want her to run uninterrupted.
That's, that's fine. My, my, my question is really dealing with, I guess, section four. I took the time to go through a lot of stuff here and it, there's a lot. I, I've got a couple of questions. The swimming pool thing, that's for conforming lots. Now, if your lot isn't conforming, then you need a special permit. Is that the understanding?
That's correct.
Because most lots in this town are not conforming, correct?
That's correct. We'll get to that too.
All right, fine. Second question, I went through all the definitions, a lot of definitions. One question I had, I didn't see anything on solar arrays. I saw something on wind energy devices, but nothing on solar arrays. Was that?
Solar, yeah, we should probably, we, solar, there is a section on solar. I don't have my.
Section 11.
Section 11 is solar. Again, maybe we should, if there are definitions in section 11, they maybe should be moved to section two. We didn't, like I said, perfect versus good.
Right.
We can look at that.
Okay.
There is a, section 11 does define wind and solar arrays. Okay, so section six, after our successful November renumbering, one of the things in section six is there are as many blank sections as there are sections with provisions in them. So we wanted to fix that. The, the section actually has a whole bunch of unrelated things. Right now it has non-conforming lots, which we are moving to a section seven. And most importantly, um, oh, secondly, we are proposing to move several things in the general bylaws and we'll talk about those at the, at the end. Those are curb cuts, junk cars and an updated stormwater permit requirements. Section six includes parking regulations, which are largely unchanged. We just deleted a few redundant things on accessory uses. Signage is, needs a rework, but we have not touched that. And what we've done is consolidated what's called performance based design standards for special permit and move them to performance based standards where possible, instead of prescriptive standards. And I'll come back to that in a second. The topographic change and site clearing special permit, we revised the purpose section and gave it a slightly new title, but the substance of what triggers the regulations has not changed. So we just tried to get a more updated set of purpose. So important for the changes we made to section six are the difference between performance based standards and prescriptive. So a prescriptive standard is something that says you shall retain a buffer between your house and the road or your property, your project and the road. A performance based standard would be you shall screen, the, the, the project shall not be seen from the road. So there are lots of ways to achieve that performance that might be different than retaining a, a buffer, because the buffer might include currently trees that are in a swamp and are dying. And so the outcome of the performance to not see the development would not be achieved by the prescriptive requirement to retain the buffer, because the buffer was in a wetland. But what we want is to think about what the outcomes are and strive to meet outcomes rather than get ourselves into a place where we're prescribing every little thing, forgetting some of the important things, which often happens with prescriptive standards. And also avoid the projects that come right up to the limit of a prescriptive standard without imaginative solutions to the problem or without, or also to avoid the regulation themselves. And it is certainly a best practice to have performance based standard. Chris, you wanna, you had another example too, which might be helpful.
Yeah, so the one that's listed here is an access road that has to be 20 feet wide versus an access road that has to accommodate fire, a fire truck. We, you don't really care what the access road width per se is. You want to make sure you get a fire truck up there. So that's the difference between a prescriptive and a performance based standard.
Right, a straight road that is 18 feet might accommodate the fire apparatus, but one that's on a corner, on that corner might need it to be wider than 20 feet. So that's the big change for section six and it's also just significantly more readable. And the big, the next big section is non-conforming use. And as John pointed out, about three quarters of the properties in town don't fully comply with current zoning. So the goal here is to ease some rules that will allow changes to non-conforming buildings with less difficulty and expense and more flexibility for approving modifications of grandfathered properties. So any change to a non-conforming structure right now requires either special permit or variance. And changes in use are not allowed. So changing from a commercial use to a residential use or a residential use to a commercial use should be two, you know, drastically different uses, but there are other grayer areas. So the new language, and the other thing is that case law in this area of non-conforming use, we're led to believe, hopefully we don't want to go there, where, where, where we become part of the case law. But it does lead you apparently to a rabbit hole without clear, clear outcomes. So the new language was developed by Mark Bobrowski almost in its entirety. And it allows minor changes to non-conforming residences without obtaining a special permit. The other issue here on the special permit by the ZBA is that the ZBA is getting inundated with these small changes, permits for these small changes. So it does allow them more flexibility in issuing permits for changes as, when they do come before them. And specifies if a non-conforming structure is demolished or abandoned, how will that be handled? It's, it's allowed to be rebuilt within, with certain conditions. So a couple of scenarios, so to speak, or things that, how does this apply? Changes to structures in conforming lots, if, if they comply with the regs and that's by right, by right. So if I have a, a law, a house on a lot that can, that's conforming, I can put it on an addition. For example, in both the proposed cha, proposed zoning and the current zoning. And the question becomes because my lot is smaller, as long as I conform with lot coverage and other things, why couldn't I put a dormer on? If my lot, it doesn't, is small, too small for the required district. So in the new section seven, this would be allowed by right if it's with, meets the setback requirements. That should say meets the setback requirements. Currently, that requires a special permit. On number, the third one down, if we change a structure that does not conform to the setback requirements, that is, it's too close to the side lot. And in the proposed change, this would be allowed by right if a non-conformity is not made worse or is just a small change as determined by the building inspector. And currently that requires a special permit. So again, if my house sits on a lot, it's, it is closer to the side lot than is required by section five, then I would currently have to go to a special permit. And we are proposing that that be allowed by right. Changes to the building that are currently exceed 35 feet, again, requires a special permit today and would be by right if a non-conformity is not made worse or is de minimis. And lastly, changes in use are not allowed at all now and would be allowed by a special permit if the new use is determined to be less detrimental to the neighborhood. And these are all special permits by the ZBA. Chris, you want to add anything to that?
I would just add that this has been raised at town meetings in the past and has never passed. We're hoping as part of a more comprehensive zoning change that it might get through. But we'll have to see what happens.
Um, okay.
So Chris, none of these changes have, have been able to make it through a time.
Well, I wasn't at the meeting, so I didn't, I can't speak to that, but I know Gary Gilbert has proposed them at various town meetings in the past without any success. Maybe they were worded differently, you know, there may be technical reasons, but I do know that this can be a hot button in many communities and I'm sure we're no exception.
Okay, can we pause for just one or two quick questions?
Absolutely.
Anne Harrison.
Yeah. In a case like this, where you have a section where several of would, will you be presenting these as four separate items so that if there is agreement on some, you don't lose it if there's no agreement on the other? This is, this is a procedural question about how you're handling it at town meeting.
As you, as you said, that it's an interesting idea. We, we could certainly think about that.
Mr. Wilson, do you have a comment about that?
Um.
Well, depending on how it's presented, it's possible for either the meeting to vote to divide the question, or for me to divide the question on my own motion. I haven't thought about it with respect to this set of issues, though.
Okay. Okay, Becky Jacks. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Jeff. I have, I have two questions from either Sarah or Chris. You said that in terms of the changes where it says by right, and, and, you know, regarding not made worse or de minimis. So those, that, that determination falls to the building inspector?
Yes, that's correct.
So then the second part of that question is, I know some of the other changes will also fall to the building inspector, and I'm curious if we, in, are we planning on increasing the building inspector's hours? Or does the building inspector have time to assess if these are in fact the, the nonconformity not made worse or de minimis?
So in fact, the building inspector was, attended most of the meetings where these changes were discussed. And I don't think he was asking for a bigger raise or anything as a result of this. I think he just thought it was part of his responsibility as a building inspector. He, what happens now, if someone comes in and wants to build an addition on their house, and he has to look at it and then say, well, that's going to have to go to the Board of Appeals for a, a special permit, so he's already involved. I guess, I don't think this adds much to his workload necessarily.
Thank you, and you all have done just yeoman's work on this, so thank you, and they, it makes a lot of sense from the perspective of having been a planning board member, so thank you.
John?
Yes, Jeff, I'd like to go back to section six, if I may. We're on section seven right now. But in section six, as I was reviewing, you had a section on, or a section 6.2 on signs. And with regard to the general district, the general district has a good chunk of it that is in the historic district. And the historic district commission has some policy with regard to signs. They in general are similar to what's described here, but there are more concerns about sign materials and temporary signs and that sort of thing. And I'm just wondering if there shouldn't be a line in there that says there may be further, further restrictions or requirements that the historic district commission may, may impose if, if, if a building is in the historic district.
We could certainly do that. I think that, so signs right now, we think signs need a, a refresh.
Okay.
But we did not notice the meeting to say that, so we can't really, happily, we can't take it up right now. And I think Mark Babrowski would say that we shouldn't try to use zoning as a way to educate people about what other things apply. So, for example, with some used regulations or special permit regulations, there are additional regulations if you are in the water resources district, for example, that, and we don't reference those. Like, like you need to go, it's your responsibility to go find them. So we could do that. And certainly, I, I don't think there's a, a risk to just adding a reference to historic district signage, but I think that's the rationale.
Okay, well, these types of concerns, yes, they generally find their way to the appropriate board or committee eventually, one way or the other.
But it's a good thought.
Yep.
Okay, I'll keep going here. Adult entertainment. We are obligated to allow adult entertainment. It is allowed in the LCV by special permit, and we can regulate it as long as it's not banned, but we don't have any regulations now. So we're vulnerable to an unregulated adult entertainment establishment coming in. So it's simply a very simple new section developed by the land use attorney. I took his words entirely. The regulations would require the special permit and the standards of operations for that establishment and prohibit visual pictures and other merchandise from public view. So that seems like we have nothing, we're vulnerable, and it's a, a proposal. Now we get into the, let me, section nine has three, has, currently has two sections. Actually, anyway, accessory dwelling units, so accessory dwelling units offer, I think everybody knows what they are. They are a low, the, the goal is to have a lower-cost housing option and allow a homeowner, homeowner to effectively maybe provide a source of revenue or provide housing for a family member who could maintain residency in the town. Currently, all ADUs require a special permit by the ZBA, are only allowed in houses built before 1984. I have no idea why that is the case. And require double the minute, the minimum lot size required and four parking spaces. So we are proposing that the building inspector may grant an ADU by right as long as it complies with specific regulations. And those are within the single occupants, single-family home, and that the size is limited to 900 square feet with one additional parking space as allowed, I think it says, as allowed or something, that the owner occupies the primary dwelling for six months or more, and that the resident of the ADU have a lease, so it's not a Airbnb, but the lease is a six-month minimum lease duration. And that the building inspector would cap the number of ADU permits at 20 units per year. I think currently we do half dozen or so. So we're not really worried that there's going to be a flood, but, but perhaps there'll be more since we're relaxing some of the standards. It, we are eliminating the requirement that an employee reside in the ADU. It's kind of a loophole right now, where it says that you can have a, a, ADU for a employee employed on site. And it's, the ZBA is concerned that that's being abused, that loophole is being abused. If the ADU does not meet the single-family home, as in not a detached home, detached building, the size and so forth, then they would go get a special permit as they do now. So oh, here's the issues. The location is in single-family homes in all districts except RD1 and RD2. Same as our current bylaw, except the current bylaw requires that they be also in homes built prior to 1984. Lot size that we're proposing, this is a big change, the minimum lot size for the district, they currently require two times the minimum lot size. Their size would be a maximum of 900 square feet and be within the existing house with one additional parking space. Currently, there's no size limit, and you must have four additional spaces. Currently, we allow an exemption for employees, and that exemption we would delete. As I said, owner occupies the primary dwelling, and if you have the by right ADU, it'd be in, and within the primary dwelling unit, dwelling building. Excuse me, this, not in your garage or your carriage house, and that if that's the case, it would be by special permit. A lease is required, and the building inspector provides oversight, renewing a permit for every year, every five years. Currently, there's no oversight. Once you get the ADU from the ZBA, you're done. 20 per year with no limit currently. And there, there's a provision in the draft to grandfather existing ADUs that would be registered with the building inspector over the course of two years. So I'll stop there. Chris, you want to add?
So yeah, I say a couple of things. One is, there is tremendous demand for more housing in Manchester, as we all know. And this is a way of actually providing some housing with a minimal impact on the neighborhoods, because they're all going to be within existing houses. One thing I think everyone should realize is that currently, any homeowner is allowed to have four borders living in their home by right, so this is a much smaller impact on the community than what we already approved theoretically. And finally, I want to report a conversation I had with Sarah Melish about this. And she said, actually, one family is hiring their mother to be an employee of the family, so they can build an ADU for her under the current bylaw, which is kind of silly, but that's, that's the, I guess, the extent of where, how far people go to get these things done. And we know, we all know, in our neighborhoods, you know, I have neighbors that have illegal or unregistered ADUs right now. We all know they're there. We're just trying to legalize them and, and regulate them in a, in a systematic way. So I don't know if people have questions or comments on this, because it's going to be a big issue at the town meeting.
I see Anne's hand up, but in case you're going to ask the same thing that you asked about with the nonconforming use, have we thought about breaking these things into pieces? The piece that we have thought a little bit about is the oversight. Piece. But in this case, it seems like people are either for or against the idea of ADUs. And then if you're for them, that this package kind of makes sense, we hope. And that if you're against them, you're kind of against them comprehensively. So this was also developed by a committee that didn't, that extended quite far beyond the planning board, and that, I can't, it predated me, so Gary Gilbert and people from, I think, the Housing Trust and a number of other people participated in developing this.
That's correct.
Okay, I would like to ask Anne to ask one question. Go ahead, Anne.
Um, actually, I wasn't going to ask what you thought I was going to ask. If you're proposing an ADU, and you say it's within the existing house, but can you extend the existing house by 900 feet? I, I am confused by the maximum square, 900 square feet of additional within the existing house, because maybe you have a different idea of what within is.
Sure, so if you're allowed to, within the setback requirements, build an addition on your house now. And so you could do that and call it an ADU and, and build a 900-square-foot addition to the house if it met all other zoning requirements, absolutely.
So the, the language that we've proposed is an ADU shall be subordinate to the primary dwelling and occupy the same lot. Second criteria is the ADU shall be contained within the residential structure, not in a detached building. The ADU should be no longer than, no larger than 900 square feet of living area, nor have, have more than two bedrooms, as determined by the building inspector. And no exterior entries may be added to the front or principal facade of the building for the purpose of accommodating the ADU. New unit entries may be created, being a shared interior entry vestibule or located on the side or rear of the building. And the intention is to, you know, we've heard a lot about town character, and the intention is to maintain that look and feel of, in the single-family homes of the look and feel of a single-family home, despite the fact of adding an ADU.
Okay, Alan's got his hand up, and I also want to be cognizant of time. Let me ask Sarah and Chris, how much more time do you need for this presentation?
We're close to the end.
We're close to the end. Okay, let me take Alan's question and realize that the end is in sight. We're supposed to be stopping on this item at 25 past.
Oh, I will be characteristically brief. I haven't done the final analysis on this and haven't consulted with town council yet, but I believe that this amendment will fall under the 2020 amendments to the zoning enabling act passed by the legislature with the effect that it will require a majority vote and not two-thirds.
This particular issue of ADUs or all of the zoning amendments?
Only ADUs that I'm talking about now.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll continue. I'm going to jump to the summary slide here. We are proposing some revisions to the residential conservation cluster. Actually, what is a residential conservation cluster? It allows for the preservation of open space, so more efficient use of land. So it's a piece of a subdivision that would allow houses to be clustered together with smaller lots, but then shared open space or affordability. We get, and you get a bonus for affordability, open, additional open space or off-site town amenities. So Surf Village or Elm Street or 21 Pine are all examples. So currently, in order to do residential conservation cluster, you need to have five acres. And our proposal is to say you can do it on a lot that currently complies. So if you had one acre zoning, and you had, if you had three acres, you could put three lot, three clustered homes by special permit, you would be required to have an affordability of 10%. So if it was three homes, you'd actually need one of those to be affordable, up to 10, and then at 11, you'd need two. We specify that. But if, let's say that when the numbers get a little bigger, if you have 10 homes, one of which is affordable, and you add a second affordable unit, you get a 10% bonus. If you add some more open space, you get a 10% bonus up to a cumulative bonus of 20% additional units. So if you had, if you were allowed 10 units by the zoning, you could have a maximum of 12 units there that would be clustered together with at least one of them being affordable and some class, some of the open space that's defined in the bylaw. Other town benefit would be the contribution to a soccer field, for example. And setbacks could be reduced by special permit as they currently are. So so the big change there really is the minimum lot change. The last big change is senior housing. We do not have a senior housing bylaw, so we propose to allow some senior housing, and we define that in our definition section. And that could be 55-plus little units, or it could be a nursing kind of small facility, or even a larger facility. And this is something we've heard over and over. People want to have, and our land use attorney proposed most of the language. Its oversight would be by special permit. Currently, we propose it in all districts. Want to hear feedback on, on that from folks. Lot sizes as required by the district, as are the dimensional requirements. And we limit, put upper limits on the size of what could be in a senior housing building. We have proposed some design standards, both in terms of site and exterior, and the age restriction is as defined by state law, meaning a, a lower limit for age. So there are no changes in the special districts of flood plains and wind and solar and water resources. And then last, almost last, is the new administration section. It's currently section seven. We would renumber it to section 12. And we've kind of just tried to clean it up. Interestingly, Interestingly, the roles and powers of the planning board are not currently defined anywhere, except in a handwritten set of bylaws from many years ago. And we made section 12, the procedures for reviewing special permits and site plan review here, and the criteria, the review, design criteria in section six. Lastly, we're proposing to move things out of the zoning to the general bylaws. I think you guys talked about this when we were not here the last time. Zoning is one time and only applies when you go to get a permit or a new development where the general bylaws apply all the time. So our proposal is threefold. One is to move curb cuts, which is driveway entrances, out of the zoning and into the general bylaws, and to move their oversight from the planning board to the DPW. That is what most towns do. And we're happy to share the responsibility. If the curb cut does not meet the requirements in the general bylaw proposal, they would come back to the planning board. Junk car regulations, we moved just straight out of zoning into general bylaws so that they have brought it more broader applicability. And stormwater management had some changes to bring it into compliance with state standards, and by moving it to the general bylaws, it applies not just to site plan review or special permits or building permits, but broadly for, for land use across the town. And again, as a best practice, we refer to those storm management, stormwater management regs that we hope will be in the general bylaws in our, in our zoning. Lastly, we're going to have 11 articles that we group together. And we'll be working with Alan and Greg about moving these to the warrant. So it's a lot. We welcome your input between now and the 24th. We hope you'll support these changes and they are available on the website at that link below. And I know that a question for you is that Greg has suggested that we do a mailer to the town to, and, and the question is, should we have that be a detailed description, or should it be a simple point to the website? And if you have input on that either tonight or later, happy to hear that.
Thank you very much. That's a lot to cover in a short period of time. Becky, you've had your hand up for a while, and I want to recognize you.
Um, one question to Chris or Sarah regarding the, the cluster development, and is there a specific definition for affordable housing in this?
Yes, there is. And it actually will take you to the state law, the state definition of affordable housing. And essentially, it means that any, it will meet all the criteria for being listed on the state housing inventory, which is, you know, an important thing for the town, so.
Is there, is there any room for making it a lower, as opposed to being 20% AMI? Does that allow for any a lower percentage?
Which certainly could be lower and would, would meet the definition. I guess we could try to force it lower. The problem is, without a subsidy, it's often hard for developers to provide that, the, you know, the affordability and a lower AMI gets to be very expensive. So something we should consider, certainly.
I just wondered if that was, if that is factored in, that you can have that flexibility?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Great, thank you.
Just to clarify for people who are listening, AMI is average, average, no. And for our area, it's specified as $100,000 currently. Typically, it's 80%, not 20%, but 80% of AMI defines affordable housing, as we've all learned through the SLV project, and that's $80,000 per family floor.
Thank you for clarifying that, Jeff.
That's okay. All right. Are there any other questions in the board for Sarah and Chris?
Also, just saying, Ron, I see Christina, Sue Brown are also on. Just thank you, everybody on the board. We've worked hard on this.
You take your words right out of my mouth every time, so now come on. We really, as, as the select board, really want to thank you for the long drawing that this has been and how hard you've worked to bring this to the place where Alan could say, okay, we could do this at a town meeting. And I, it's been a long, long time and a lot of hard work, a lot of you know, digging in deeply into these regs and, and coming up with something that's, that's going to be useful, streamlined, clearer, user-friendly. And thank you very, very much. And we appreciate your quick presentation tonight. I'm going to move ahead to our next agenda item, which is to appoint an MAPC representative, a planning board member to the MAPC. And the current planning board member is Christina Delucio, and her term is coming to an end. And the board would like to to consider a new appointment tonight. And I don't think I need to go through the statute or any of that. Basically, this is a representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to work with other communities in the, in the area the large area greater Boston. And it's a three-year term. So I will take a motion for appointment. We've discussed this and asked the planning board chair to give a recommendation to us. He recommended Sarah Hammond Creighton. I contacted Sarah separately and asked her whether she would be willing to serve if appointed. And she said yes, because that's a hard word for Sarah to say that other word. No. So she said yes. And so the motion would be to appoint Sarah Hammond Creighton for three years as the planning board rep to the Metropolitan Area Council.
So moved.
Second.
The second by Mr. Round. Okay. Any discussion by the board?
Yeah, actually, a very small technical change to can we change that motion to three-year appointment of Sarah Hammond Creighton as a three-year representative of the town, of towns representative to the MAPS.
Accepted. As amended.
And the second on that one?
Yes, is also accepts that.
Thank you, Mr. Round. Any other questions or comments on this, this nomination? Okay, then I'll take a roll call vote, a roll call vote. We'll start with Becky Jakes.
Yes, and thank you, Sarah.
John Round.
Yes, and thank you.
Yeah, bowling.
Yes, it's.
And Anne Harrison.
Yes, thank you.
And the chair votes yes. So it's a unanimous vote. Thank you so much, Sarah, for stepping up. And we've got some buildings we'd like to have built. We'll be back to you on that. Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is short-term paying guest accommodations license application from David Demeter. David is here. Yes, I don't see his name.
Jeff, I'm sorry. Are we doing the special town meeting articles?
Oops.
Item three, sorry.
I missed one. I'm sorry. The next one is the review of special town meeting articles, and Alan can take that sharp look off of his face.
I just lowered my hand, Jeff.
Okay, so Greg, do you want to set this one up, please?
Sure, thank you, Jeff. So obviously, the primary focus is the set of zoning amendments that is being proposed. And you just had a run through of what that might look like. So a little fine tuning to do on the actual articles and how they get presented. One of those last side that Sarah showed indicated how those different amendments might be presented, how they might be bundled. Some bundled together and others are standalone. So that's the bulk of the, of the meeting. There is a second item, a second topic besides zoning. Came to fruition just in the last couple of weeks. It goes back a few years, but there is a piece of property that is landlocked behind the housing authorities loading place road units. And this is just over a two-acre parcel owned by the Holland family and a trust. And the Holland family is very interested in seeing the land be devoted to affordable housing, and they were pursuing a donation to the town for the property. The property does have a title defect and a, a easier way to deal with that defect is to take the land through eminent domain. So in essence, this would be a friendly taking, if I can use that phrase. And that the taking, the eminent domain process basically creates a fresh new title to the property. It is possible that theoretically, it is possible that, that some unknown person has an interest in the property, and they could come forward. I think it's a three-year period during which that could happen. We certainly don't expect that. The Hollands have had this property for decades and have been paying taxes on it for all this time. And no one, no one has challenged their ownership during the decades that they have had it. So we certainly don't expect that to happen, but it is a possibility. So the Affordable Housing Trust, they voted at their meeting the other night to recommend that an article be placed at town meeting to authorize you as the selectman to pursue a taking of the property from the trust, and that it would be taken, taken for the purpose of affordable housing and under the auspices of the Affordable Housing Trust. So that is an additional article that is being put forth as a suggestion for you to place on the warrant for the June 11th special town meeting.
Okay, Anne.
Is that the only article we're considering, or is that an additional article? I'm specifically referring to the Hamilton land issue.
So the Chewbacca Road issue, we had talked about that as a possibility coming forward back to the voters. But it turns out Hamilton was interested in taking another stab at it, but it turns out that they are under a tight timeline that they basically run out of time for expending their bond monies. And so they're, they are not able, they're not in a position to entertain constructing the road as proposed to voters at the last, last fall. And that they will be pursuing paving the existing gravel portion, reconfiguring it so that it drains away from the, from gravelly pond into some new swales and retention areas so that the runoff is, is filtered basically over, over the land before, before it runs into gravelly pond. So we do not have that before us as a possibility for this coming town meeting.
The other issue that I had suggested is raising the CPA contribution. We need that money.
Yes, the Community Preservation Committee discussed that at their, at their last meeting, and they felt, and I, I tend to agree that we should get the information further along for Sweeney and the Rotunda in particular, as two large projects that would potentially benefit from a higher surcharge, and that it would be helpful to have those facts and figures in hand as a way to better explain why the, the higher surcharge is being proposed. So the thinking was that it would be something that could be pursued either at the fall town meeting or next, next year's annual town meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Alan Wilson.
Thank you, Jeff. Going back to the taking, Greg, will there be any consideration involved?
No, they are, they are not seeking any any funds. So they are willing to allow the town to, to take the property without compensation.
Thank you. The, the reason I ask is that if there's no consideration, it's just a simple majority at town meeting. But if there is consideration, it's a two-thirds.
So my only hesitation there, Alan, is if if there's some long-lost claim to the property and it were to come forward. Well, I guess we could deal with that at a separate vote, perhaps. So the, the, the property being landlocked is appraised very minimally. And so it is, if, if a person came forward claiming title or claiming rights to that property and demanded to be compensated. I think we're talking in the tens of thousands of dollars at most, you know, maybe $30,000. And that is something that the Affordable Housing Trust could do on their own. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think out loud with you.
I'm, I'm not sure that's true, because if, if the town approves the taking, I would, I, I think it may be true that the, the compensation would have to come from the town. And there, and there is a distinction in this, in the statute that applies, that requires a two-thirds vote for an appropriation. I mean, if, if it, I, I would think we could take it as a simple majority at this meeting because we don't have any idea what the amount might be. And if we, if the worst-case scenario played out, bring it back again and vote the amount by two-thirds.
Yes. I think I've come, come to that, given the very unlikelihood that, right, that somebody steps forward.
Greg, just as a point of clarification, you mentioned three years. Do we have to wait three years before we could use this land as part of affordable housing development as loading place?
I don't know if you technically have to wait the three years, but it would be at our risk. So the more prudent way would be to wait, wait those three years.
Even though it's taken by eminent domain?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, just one small issue. Okay, there's one small issue in terms of the way that the proposed article is written in the notes in your report. And that is there is no longer a board of selectmen, it is the select.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Eli.
Does planning board have to make a report on this piece of land?
Yes, we would.
Does that require a public hearing?
You're right, not a formal hearing, it has to be on their agenda, but not as a formal public hearing.
Okay.
There is, there is also a time requirement. Which I think is that they have to make, they're supposed to make the recommendation at least fourteen days prior to the town meeting, I believe. Although town council has said that that's not mandatory, if they miss the deadline, it's still okay, as long as we have the report.
Okay, that would be by the twenty seventh now, right?
Well, I believe the planning board was was. Going to be meeting on the twenty third, I believe. And have this as an agenda item.
Okay, great. Any further questions about that particular article? Are there any other articles besides that? There would be articles in this warrant. Because most of the other things that we've talked about, we've said, not this time. The plate is full.
Right, I my understanding is it would be the zoning articles and and this possible taking article.
Okay. In terms of the presentation of the articles related to the planning board changes. Would be possible to place the ADUs at the end of the agenda. They look like they come towards the end. If you take things in sequence. But. My concern is. Maintaining a core throughout this procedure.
I I believe, Jeff, that the planning board presentation included a suggested order for the articles in the warrant. I know they've thought a lot about it.
Okay. I'm sure the better minds than mine have dealt with that. I just could be concerned about dropping below core.
Me too.
And having a having a challenge. Could you please mute yourself? Thank you. Okay, so if there's nothing else on that.
So the only last item then would be. In order to finalize the warrant. We would need a special meeting next week. Twenty fourth of the twenty fifth.
How does that work in terms of people's schedules?
I think it's great.
Mr. Balling, I'm going to mute you.
Really muted himself.
I'm sure he's drinking water too. Okay, other of the four remaining board members. Who are concerned about this, how does it look for them on the twenty fourth or the twenty fifth? My preference would be the twenty fourth.
My preference is the twenty fourth also, Jeff.
Same here, as long as there's no conflict with other town meetings.
This would be a very short agenda to approve the warrant. Which would include. The articles related to zoning that come out of the public hearing tomorrow. And. This one other article on. This land tech. Does that work for you?
Either day.
Either day, okay.
Apparently, nothing on the twenty fourth on the town calendar. So twenty four works for me.
Okay, so let's do that at six thirty next week. Okay. Now, we will move on to. The request.
Just quick, quick. Will that be the meeting where we reorganize?
I, yes, that will be the other agenda.
Okay.
So if. By the grace of the voters, if I should be elected tomorrow. I would chair that meeting until a new chair was appointed and that would be the first order of business. Okay, and if I'm not elected, Becky would chair the meeting as vice chair.
I think our policy is the longest serving member, but she's also that.
She is. She would be the longest. Okay. I believe now we can move to Mr. Demery's application, if there's no other agenda items that I've skipped over.
I'll just say good evening and see you at the polls tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Good luck tomorrow, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, you too.
I know you have stiff competition.
You never know about those write ins.
Okay, so. You're definitely running behind, let's see what we can do here. Oh, actually, we're running ahead.
Oh, you're running ahead.
Whoops, and David Demeter. Is David Demeter here?
Don't see him.
I I'm here, I just called in.
Okay. Great. All right. This is an application by, while we still need to, we we should be waiting until eight o'clock. David, I'm sorry, we 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 time our meetings, we time the items.
No, that's that's fine, that's fine, I'm happy waiting till eight.
And. We could go to our town administrators' report on town elections, if you want to do that, Greg.
Yes, okay. So yes, as it's been stated, tomorrow is election day, town election day. Polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. So you have thirteen hours in which you can find some time hopefully to make your way to the elementary school, memorial school. And the town ballot is will be available. Had a pretty strong turnout for absentee balloting, so I think that's a good sign, I'm hopeful that there'll be a good turnout tomorrow. And certainly. Town clerk Diana Buco has been very busy with with her crew, getting things organized and things should run smoothly tomorrow. And there are the the various elected positions as well as about one which is a nonbounding article on the dispatch operations. Whether we should. Merge with the regional center or. Improve our in-house operations. So that's set for tomorrow and look forward to a smooth and busy day.
Greg, before you go on, there's one thing that I did not mention in my report that's related to what you're talking about now. That at this morning's meeting, we had a short public meeting and then an executive session. That we did not return to public meeting from. And in that short public meeting, Becky Jakes brought up. A question about the number of election signs that were on. Town property, which is prohibited placement of those election signs and why had they not been removed? I'm happy to announce that there are between thirty and forty election signs that are now resting in the basement of the police station that were recovered from town property. Over the course of the weekend. As of yesterday, there were still several that were out. But. I I go around and look today and. All those have been removed. The. One issue with this that we may need to deal with, or the board may need to deal with in the future. Is coming up with a clear strategy prior to a town election for notifying candidates and the public. About the placement of signs and. And having a clear process of sweeping signs that are illegally placed. Thank you. Back to back to Greg.
Okay, all right, very good, yes, and then item number two, I just wanted to bring people's attentions to a couple of upcoming meetings. Regarding climate resiliency work that is happening in the region on Cape Air. This is efforts with the four communities, organization called Town Green. And a number of boards and committees in the different towns in the city. So the first one is coming up on the eighteenth, that's a seven o'clock meeting. The details can be found on the Town Green website, we'll also. Put notice up on on our webpage as well. So this is a presentation of. Simulation of a category three hurricane hitting Cape Air. It's called the the Great Storm of twenty thirty eight, a hundred years after the nineteen thirty eight hurricane that did strike the area. This is part of the work that Harvard University has been commissioned to do through Town Green, through monies that were secured. Senator Tarr's help as well as private donations. And will be, as I say, a presentation of what can be expected from a hurricane hitting the area. I've seen some preliminary, some of the preliminary graphics, it is sobering at best. It's quite destructive. And a storm surge causes extensive extensive damage throughout the area. So as not to leave everyone totally depressed and worried about such a storm, the second part of the evening. Takes the initial look at some of the suggestions and recommendations that the Harvard team is developing. In ways that we could reduce or mitigate the damage from such a storm. So what are some of the steps that we can be taking now to better prepare ourselves? To avoid some of the worst of the damages that we might expect. And that work will be ongoing and will be the focus of. You know, ongoing discussions in all the communities about what we can be doing to better prepare ourselves. And be more resilient to the challenges that are that are on on their way. And the the second meeting, a week later, May twenty third, it's. Quite a week later, but it's a Monday morning meeting at nine o'clock, it's the second workshop from the EPA Building Blocks Program. Cape Anne was one of four communities, four regions in the country that were chosen. To participate in the technical assistance grant from EPA. And it is focusing on, again, what? What are the ideas, priority ideas and action steps that we can be taking as a region? As we look to mitigate the impacts of of rising seas and bigger storms. And again, more information on that workshop can be found. We'll put it on the website and it's also can be found at the towngreen.org website. So some some upcoming workshops and there'll be follow follow-ons from both of them. And encourage people who can to to attend those. And they'll be recorded as well and can be viewed at a later date for those who were busy on the eighteenth and twenty third.
Thank you, Greg, for bringing that to your attention.
And then lastly, pleased to announce that joining the the town team staff will be Debbie Powers, she'll be joining us on the first of June. As the new executive assistant in in my office and in the select board's office. So we look forward to welcoming Debbie, she comes with quite a bit of skill and experience doing a very similar job in this. In the neighboring community. And I think she'll be able to hit the ground running for us and I know that I very much am looking forward to having that position filled full time. So that'll that'll be a big help.
Congratulations on that. We all look forward to that, that's wonderful. Okay, we're now at eight o'clock. Which means it's. David Demeter time. David. This is an application for short term paying guest accommodations. At forty nine Union Street. And. David, you want to tell us a little bit about your application? Hello, David. I wonder if he stepped away from his phone. Okay. We can do this without David. It'd be nice to have him here for questions.
Hi, sorry, I had I had my phone on mute too.
Whoops. Okay, you want to tell us a little bit about your application, David?
Sure, so this is the third third year that I've applied for the license. This summer I have. July and August. That I was going to do seven day rentals. And it'd be the second summer that I've done it. And last summer was very successful, I think everybody had a great time and like to do it again.
Okay. Ask if there's questions from the board on this application.
Hi, David, I just, thank you, Jeff, wanted to know, did you receive any positive or negative specifically? Feedback, were there any complaints either from the tenants or abutters?
None, no complaints to my knowledge, and I have a four point nine seven super host status on Airbnb.
Well done.
People, people love Manchester, they absolutely. They, you know, people from all over the country came last summer and just they they couldn't believe that this is where we get to call home.
Thank you.
Good. David, are you living in the premises?
I I'm there for about half the year and then I'll I'll be out for the summer.
Okay, so who manages it?
So I'm still in town, it's me, my office is across the street as well.
So you're still in town, but you're not at at this particular unit?
Correct, I have another house in town in my, like I said, my office, I own my my office building is on Union Street as well, so I'm there every day.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the board? And your tenants, do they go to town hall to pick up a parking permit?
So I have a guest pass. for the unit, so I usually just leave the guest pass.
Even though it's moving from car to car?
Right. It's just the guest pass for the unit, for the property that I have.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion from the board?
Move to approve the application as described.
Seconded by Mr. Bowling, moved by Ms. Harrison. Any further comments or discussion from the board? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
And Chair votes, yes. Thank you, Ms. Demeter. And we look forward to having another successful summer of quiet guests.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, now we're against our clock again. Need to do better on our timings. Our next item on the agenda is the flag raising request from North Shore Pride for the LGBTQ plus community and that's scheduled for eight ten. And I have eight oh six. We have completed both the consent agenda and the town administrator's report. I'm not sure. There's a lot of dead air and I don't want it to be a lot of dead air, but we also have people who may be wanting to step up to ask questions about this who aren't here and the site is scheduled from eight ten to eight thirty. So we have confirmed our select me, our select board meeting for the twenty-fourth. We look forward to the town meeting on June eleventh at one P M. And encourage everybody in this meeting to encourage their friends and neighbors to come to that meeting, whether they have a particular project that they want to do right now or not.
Excuse me, Jeff, if I may.
Becky has her hand.
Yeah, I just wanted, under item seven consent agenda, we're moving the four eighteen minutes approval. Will we be taking those up on June sixth? Or are we going to move those to the next meeting, which is May twenty-fourth?
We will probably, Greg, if if there's any difference in what I'm about to say, correct me. We'll probably take those up on the twenty-fourth. Because our minutes are the official record of our meetings and they should be posted within thirty days of the meeting. And that's a little bit past thirty days. So rather than swinging it all the way out to June sixth and missing another two weeks on that being posted, I would suggest we take it up then.
Thank you.
Okay. And the clock on the wall says for me, it's time to go. So I'm going to move into our next agenda item, which is raising a flag in front of town hall for LGBTQ plus North Shore Pride. This was an item that was taken up at our last meeting and then postponed until today until we could have an opportunity with town council to review the impact of the decision of the United States Supreme Court in a case involving the city of Boston and their denial of a permit for a flag to a religious organization. We have had some feedback from town council. There was also, I'd like to check in with the board. Briefing memo that was circulated late this afternoon. I'd like to know whether people in the board have had an opportunity to review that memo. Could you please shake your head yes or somehow indicate that you could? Okay. The central issue in that Supreme Court decision is whether the board has the board governing the placement of ceremonial flags or special request flags on town property has a policy regarding acceptable flag uses. And at this point, the only policy that this board has is one that's under revision for raising and lowering flags, but not in terms of what flags can fly and what flags cannot fly. So the central issue in this is the fact that there is not a specific policy that's in affected this time. And whether the board wants to move towards a policy, what that policy might be and how that impacts the timeliness of the progress flag request. So I would ask of the board, do you have considerations about a type of policy that you'd like to see in the light of the change that the decision of the Supreme Court case brings to us? Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. We have a policy on how we develop and accept policies and that procedure takes two meetings at least. So there is no way that we can come up with a policy tonight that to deal with a problem that we're going to have in the near, in the immediate future. My my reading of what the Supreme Court, the analysis of the Supreme Court decision suggests that if we specifically consider these requests, we don't, we will not be setting a precedent that all flags are must be flown. So I think, yes, we should have a policy. No, we can't get a policy together tonight. But if we consider this and decide that this is a cause that is government speech on the part of the town of Manchester by the sea, then I think we are within the bounds of the control that the court has given local authorities.
Hope I want you to hold on for just a second and let me let me speak to the other two board members who have raised their hands and then I'll come right back to you. Becky.
Thank you, Jeff. I have I have two questions. And and so the I, reading through the Supreme Court decision and and I guess referring back to one lone justice who had a differing opinion on an earlier decision. When, for example, the way the San Jose policy reads, it says officially endorsed. Is there a definition of officially endorsed? Somewhere that for example, it it seemed to imply that the LGBTQ plus flag is an officially endorsed flag. How do we know what that stands for?
Well, I'm a little confused when you say the San Jose policy refers to officially endorsed flags. Because what I reading the San Jose policy is the city's flag poles are not intended to serve as form of free expression by the public. And then they they specify the following flags may be displayed by the city as an expression of the city's official sentiments.
I gotta go back to where I found that.
None of which involves any flag of any organization that's not a governmental organization. Unless it's secondary to an action ceremonial item or proclamation of the city council. And that and San Jose's policy is an example of a policy. It's not the guidelines of Sutcliffe.
Right, okay, under Greg's what he submitted regarding this specific request. Third paragraph down, third sentence, or you can craft a policy similar to San Jose that say that specifies only officially endorsed flags can be flown.
Correct. The officially endorsed flags for the city of San Jose are just the United States flag, the state flag of California, the city flag of San Jose. Those are the officially endorsed flags.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I thought I read in one of the pieces of information we received that there was something that seemed to imply that LGBTQ plus is a recognized flag in terms of it's a it's being June being gay pride month. And that somehow it seemed to.
That's that's not in.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find it again. Okay, but thank you.
That's not in that policy, to my knowledge.
Right, just if I could just jump in maybe on that topic, Jeff?
Sure.
So it, you know, under the under the San Jose example, they talk about official proclamations of the city council. So that obviously analogous to the Board of Selectman making a proclamation, I mean, to continue with with gay pride month, if you were to declare you know, to officially declare June as gay pride month and recognition of of it's really become a national movement. Then potentially, if that was part of your policy, then 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 that is one way to get get to a yes on a on a request and would distinguish that request from perhaps another request where you you decline to make such an official declaration.
Good. Eli?
So my reading also conported with what Anne said. Moreover, I think I'd like to point out that in the past, when we've done these flag raisings, well, the town has definitely put in place procedures and policies with respect to its employment, which established towns positions on LGBTQ support. And we do support that community. And in the past, when we've had these flag raisings, we have supported them and not only have we supported them, we have individually been present and made speeches at those events, which I think pretty clearly makes it a matter of it being a municipal state municipal a statement of our governmental policy and our governmental voice. So I think that if we continue that policy, we should be just fine this time around. I do think that it would be a good idea, given the Supreme Court ruling, to establish some written policy to foreclose on the possibility of somebody, you know, trolling us. But other than that, I think that we should be good to to move forward with the request and decide the parameters.
Okay. I would tend to disagree with you, Eli. That while there has been past opportunities to have the LGBTQ community raise the pride flag at town hall. That's not been the case for the last for last year. It was not reviewed as a act of government speech by the selectmen at that time. These standards of differentiating government speech and private speech that are brought out in Sutcliffe have only just been reaffirmed. They've been partly promulgated previously by the courts. But they have only just just been reaffirmed and overturned actions of denial by the city of Boston because they didn't have a policy in place. We're in the same position as the city of Boston in the sense that we do not have a specific policy of government speech in the context of flying a particular organization's flag is something that the town supports and and wants to have that. So I I don't necessarily agree that what's happened in the past has been government speech. I don't know that maybe I'm wrong, but I don't know that there's been a proclamation that's been done in the past. You could correct me on that, Eli, because you have a better memory than I do. But I my concern is that these are new standards that change the game in terms of what we're doing and how we're doing it in the future.
Well, with respect to being a specific proclamation, I am not sure if we qualified it with specifically a proclamation. We definitely made the official public statement that this was in recognition of pride. It was a specific It was a specific part of the debate and vote that we took.
Okay. John.
Yeah. I'm really kind of in favor of allowing, under First Amendment, allowing private speech for pretty much any group that might come up and want to put up a flag or banner or something like that. I don't know how often that has happened here. Other than LGBTQ, and in my short time, that's the only group that I'm aware of. But Greg, maybe you have a better perspective or, or Eli or someone. But as I, as I mentioned, I think in the meeting the last time, I'm in favor of putting up another flag pole somewhere on the, on the, on the town common. And using that as a, as a kind of a forum for free expression, expression for these groups, whether they be, whether they be government or private, private speech groups, either one. I'm not in favor of having other flags put up over by where the monument is. Just because that flag pole is in the monument and therefore monuments kind of built to remind people of, in this instance, those who served in the armed services. So it has kind of a strong connection with regard to that and that alone. But I think a separate flag pole with, to accommodate groups such as LGBTQ and others that might come down the pipe and want to put something up. And even, even governmental flags, and I note in San Jose, they've got, I don't know, a city flag, a state flag, et cetera. They've got the ceremonial flags, and I don't necessarily consider them to be government exclusively. They've got flags of professional sports teams. I don't know if the San Jose Sharks. They have a flag, I suppose, and that, that's why that's in there. And that's not necessarily a government organization, but they you know, they would be put up on flag poles as they've defined that. I have concerns about defining flags in that nature because this is a moving target. And there'll always be other groups that come up and they say, we'd like to do this to try and define it in that way. It's constantly going to be something that comes up all the time. And I think that if we kind of treat you know, expression, you know, as, 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 you know, free speech, First Amendment, free speech, regardless, that makes things work a little bit more smoothly.
I'd like to, to respond to what you're saying, John, and that there is no constraint on free speech by denying any particular group access to a flag pole in Manchester. That's not a constraint on free speech. In fact, your suggestion that this should be a free speech flag pole would put it more in line with the flag pole that was the third flag pole in City, City Plaza in Boston that was used by all kinds of groups. Including LGBTQ and as mentioned in one article, the government of Ethiopia, which has a government policy that criminalizes homosexuality and puts people in prison for. An open public forum would require that nobody could be denied. No religious flags could be denied. No extremist flags could be denied. And I think that that opens up a can of worms that I don't particularly want to see the town. Having said that, we're back to the issue of we don't have a specific policy right now, and we have a specific request. One way to deal with that is to say that there will be no other flags that fly from the town flag pole until a policy is developed. That would require that the POW MIA flag that's up there currently would have to be removed until we develop a policy around any other flags that would go on that pole. And that doesn't have to be a policy in the sense that Anne said we have a policy on developing policies that requires two hearings. We could do that with the vote of the board selection, excuse me, the select board tonight. And then roll up our sleeves and really work at developing this kind of policy that we feel would address the possibility of a second flag pole. The possibility of how that and, and the policies for how that flag pole would be used. Okay. Having said what I've said, and having had every board member check in, I'd like to open this a little bit wider. And, and call on Hope, who has been very patient waiting. And then we have a couple of other residents' hands that have gone up as well. So Hope, if you would like to say a few words, go ahead.
I'm happy to. And thank you for putting us at the end of the agenda so that we can hear all about, you know, how the town works and all of that. We really appreciate it. Again. Thank you so much. Hope Up Bucci, my pronouns are she, her and hers. And I'm here as a private citizen. Although I am the founder and president of North Shore Pride, a nonprofit organization with a mission of education and advocacy on behalf of LGBTQ plus persons. I'm also a veteran and the past commander of the American Legion Post 113, and my name is on the honor roll. Not a memorial, an honor roll. So thank you so much. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, could the chair or someone on the board, the select board, let us know about any public responses or emails sent to them either in favor or against my request? I would love to hear some comments about that, please.
Last time that we met on this, Hope, we invited your comments and we invited comments from the and whether it's in his role as one of the chairs of the Honor Roll Committee or as part of the legion, but Mr. Heisey's comments. Mr. Heisey did submit comments and and I to my knowledge, his comments and one other email were the only emails we received. We did not receive anything from you, to my knowledge.
Oh, not from me. I wouldn't have sent you comments. No, I'm just curious. Does the, does the select board share those comments publicly or not?
I I could share those comments. Just as he's here, he could also represent.
I just like, you know, what, since the last meeting, what the comments have been.
As I said, the comments have been from Mr. Heisey and one other member of Veterans Organization. And I would prefer, since Mr. Heisey is here, that he represents his own.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll wait then. Let me just, if I could continue, please, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Great. So can I ask in terms of you referenced a briefing memo specific to this topic? Could you, could you just expand on that? I'm not sure what that was.
It's a memo from Town Council to, to the Town Administrator and the Select Board regarding Sutcliffe. Supreme Court decision.
Right, I understand. And is that, is that public? Is that available to the public?
We didn't receive it until late this afternoon. And anything that we receive is public.
So how would one find that?
It hasn't been posted. We just, we just got it late this afternoon.
So, so will it be posted?
Sure. I believe so, Greg.
Greg, you're on.
You have to unmute yourself, sir.
I love that. Yeah, we can certainly send it to you or anyone else who requests it.
Okay, so we can make a public request for that. Thank you.
No, so I can just send it to you if you like.
Oh, great, great. Thank you. I'm just looking at my notes. So can I ask if there was a state proclamation in reference to one of the select board members had referred to a state proclamation, would that supersede the Board of Selectmen's decision this evening?
No.
Not at all?
No.
Okay.
That's from the state of Massachusetts proclaiming on behalf of the state of Massachusetts.
On behalf of the state and a representative who represented the town of Manchester, a congressperson or?
I don't know what you're asking.
I'm just asking because in, in most towns, there is a proclamation presented during Pride Month identifying for that town or the North Shore that it is Pride Month from the representative from that district. And so I'm asking, would that proclamation supersede any Board of Selectmen decision? Select Board, sorry.
It would not supersede any decision of this board because that's a proclamation, again, that's coming from the state of Massachusetts. That's my understanding. And I would defer to Greg or anybody else on the board who has a different understanding of that.
Can I ask for a clarification of, of what Hope means by supersede the board's?
Oh, I just mean, for example, if you were to vote one way or the other this evening, one of the select board members had mentioned about if there were a proclamation. So I'm just asking, I'm curious, because proclamations are done all the time for Pride Month. And so I'm just wondering in terms of maybe that board member can speak more about that, but they had posed that question. So.
So I, I think, I think that your language is might be a little bit confusing here because when you say supersede a board decision, it means essentially override or negate. Proclamations cannot direct boards and municipalities to take particular actions.
I understand. I, I was only asking in reference to the select board members' comments about a proclamation.
And that those comments were in reference to the San Jose policy, which is not the policy of the town of Manchester.
Right. I understand. Yep. Thank you so much. And so well, I'm, again, if, if one were to erect a flagpole, another additional flagpole, would that occur before June 1st?
You know that it would.
I'm just asking for the record, would that occur before June 1st? And it sounds like no.
You know that it wouldn't. I mean.
I, I don't know that actually. Personally, I don't. I don't work for DPW. I, I don't do construction. I have no idea. So I'm just asking for that clarification.
I find you to be very combative.
I'm not at all.
And the answer to your question is no. It will not be erected before June 1st.
I'm not at all being, being combative. I'm just following up on.
Yes, you are, but go ahead.
Well, I'm sorry if that's your opinion. But I'm not. I'm just following up on, on comments. I've been taking copious notes and following up on comments that the select board have made. And so my inquiry is just in response.
No comments made about having a flagpole built before June 1st.
I have no idea if that's possible.
I've already answered that question.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just continue to listen and I thank you on behalf of myself and the group of people, town residents who came out on the town common in support of the flying of the progress flag. And I'm just hopeful that the board would, the select board would take that into consideration as have and approved every town and city on the North Shore with the exception of Manchester. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Heisey.
Yes, hi. Bruce Heisey, 49 Pleasant Street, member of the Veterans Honor Roll Committee. So in light of what I had sent was that the town hall flagpole was removed with, with the assumption that it might have gotten replaced someplace else around the town. The current Veterans Honor Roll Flagpole is funded by the Nahada family. So even the CPA funds that was questioned last meeting, those funds were into the honor roll itself. The, the, the pavers, all of the particular wall, but that flagpole was solely dedicated by the Nahada family. And so there is a plaque there. So it technically is not a town hall flagpole because the town hall flagpole was removed. And like I say, I thought it was going to be put someplace else. And so my stand is to keep that in honor of all of the veterans from the town of Manchester. And Hope, you're definitely one of them, you know, you're and past commander. And I acknowledge that. And so it's just for all of the veterans that are still currently with us and all those ones that have gone before us. And so that's what my sole purpose is to keep that as a Veterans Honor Roll Flagpole. And I thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you. Any comments or?
I, I would make one comment that in your email to the Board of Selectmen and and the Town Administrator of May 6th, you state that last year, after many years of planning and fundraising, the Veterans Honor Roll was completed. And at the dedication ceremony, the honor roll was gifted to the town of Manchester by the city. That was those are your words. And we discussed last time about the flagpole and unfortunately, in the process of developing the honor roll, there was a very long period of time of going back and forth with designs and fundraising, et cetera. And there was no specification about clearly, there was a specification for removing the existing flagpole because the honor roll went there. But there was no specification about the issue of whether this flagpole in this honor roll site was retained by the donor or was part of the gift by the veterans to the town of Manchester by the city. It's on town land. The overall site and site development was partially funded with taxpayer money through CPA. And in our last meeting, we discussed the flagpole as a town flagpole. I very much appreciate the position that the Nahada's family donated this flagpole, but there were also stones, paving stones and, and other money that were donated by lots of people. You raised a lot of money to do this. And I would hate to have to be in a position of saying, well, you can't do something to this particular paving stone, which is now out of line because that's not town property. It's on town property. The town's taken responsibility for the site. We've been maintaining the site to date. And all of that speaks to the fact that this is a town flag. So having said that, I'm also concerned about the intent of the honor roll where this flagpole is located. And the intent of this honor roll is to honor veterans. Um, veterans. Um, who. Uh. Have a connection to Manchester. Who. Served while they were Manchester residents, I believe is the connection. And I want to continue to honor that. Um, but that may mean that there's going to be some adjustments that we need to make. And um, and some decisions that we need, need to make. And the decisions that I might propose, maybe. Uh. Decisions that the board is amenable to. Um, or not. But. As far as the jurisdictional issues, I think that the jurisdictional issues are well said in your. Um, first paragraph of email that you sent me. Um, that the honor roll was completed and its dedication was gifted. To the town of Manchester by the sea. I was present for that dedication.
Appreciate it.
And appreciated the uh, the hard work went into it. And the honoring of all the veterans in our town whose names are on the marble and are on the paving stones. Um, and all of the sacrifices that they made. For our town, our state and our country. Let me take uh. One more public question and then I'm going to go back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Unless there's a comment that you want to make on what I just said.
No, no, I, that's fine. That, that's uh, perfectly well said and I appreciate you for being there and uh, but it is, it is, like I say, it just. It's a place for tribute to all of our veterans.
And, and I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Laura Tenney.
Good evening, uh, Laura Tenney, eighty-six Pine Street. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here as a private citizen and I just wanted to come. And express that I'm here as a friend and ally. Um, to voice my support for flying, flying a pride or progress flag um, from Town Hall if um. If not on the flagpole that stands, then you know, perhaps by June first, a flagpole attached to the building itself could be. Put out for this purpose. Um, and if, if it's what needs to happen, I support, I hope that the town will come out and support. Uh, anti-demos, excuse me, anti-discrimination policies. Or proclamation for LGBT rights. Um, if that's what needs to happen, I'm all for it. We should be, you know, we should be. Not shy to, to shout our pride for this issue. Um, with the greatest respect for veterans and all of our service people, uh, I don't think any disrespect is intended by flying this flag. Um. Uh, regardless of who's donated money to the flagpole, if it's a flagpole on Town Common, I think it's a town flag. Um, and I, and I don't think, I sincerely don't think that any disrespect is meant by flying the pride flag. In fact, I think it's a sign of mutual respect. For our fellow humans. And I really hope that we will fly it this year in whatever format um, is considered. You know, acceptable as a way to hang it uh, from Town Hall or that's a flagpole attached to the building or on the veterans memorial flagpole itself. But I think it's a really important gesture. Um, in these times to counteract hate and intolerance and discrimination. To support our many friends and family and loved ones with hope for equality for all. And to stand for human rights and to show that Manchester by the sea is truly a place that's welcoming to all. And we, and we celebrate our family and friends here and we just want to show that support. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Um. This will be the last public question, uh, uh, pub, public comment that I take on this and I'm going to go back to board members. Um, Lisa.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, Laura. I, I, you know. Certainly have no doubt that there's no disrespect that anyone.
Lisa, I'm very sorry to interrupt. Could you just state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure, sure. Um, I'm Lisa Wapucci. I live at Two Putnam Court. Obviously, I'm a private, uh, private citizen here. And um, certainly, um, you know, wanting to, to fly the progress flag. It, it certainly is to, you know, s- show support and unity, um, you know, for the LGBTQ plus um, community. And for allies who, as, as Laura mentioned, it would be wonderful for Manchester to join the ranks of the other cities and towns. And show, you know, that, that we, um, we're inclusive and, you know. Everyone is welcome and everyone should be treated equally and, you know, with respect. And certainly, um, by having uh, the progress flag on the, the town pole, as I think we've determined that it is. A town pole on town property with certainly contributions from the Nahadis family. But there's, there's absolutely no disrespect at all toward veterans. Um, as Hope mentioned, she's a veteran, she's on the wall and. She's, you know, the most patriotic person that I know. So it's really just an effort to let, you know. Residents in Manchester know that, you know, they're supported, that they're, that they're, they're equal. And that they should feel safe and comfortable in there, in the town that they live in. Um, and I think, you know, by Manchester, you know, proudly putting up a progress flag either on this. Flagpole, um, or on a town pole next to this, this section. I think really would, would speak volumes for the town and it, it would be known as a welcoming, inclusive. You know, town, which I, I, I really hope that, you know, we, we can, you know, show that along with our neighboring cities and towns. I think we all can be respectful of veterans and we all can be respectful of LGBTQ plus individuals all at the same time. App, absolutely. Everyone is equally as important and should be treated with the, with uh, respect. And, you know, all, all of that across the board. No one should be slighted in this, in this decision. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
No, that was Lisa.
Oh, Lisa. I'm Lisa.
Okay, now give me a few minutes to take my foot out of my mouth and recognize Becky.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, and this is probably a question for Hope. Um, I know we've had the um, progress flag flown. A number of times in town. Um. Hope, how many? We had it when we had, um. Chief Connolly, that was on the flagpole, was it not?
Yes, we've had it flown on the flagpole. Um, and then the last time we flew it and just for clarification, we didn't fly it. Um, through you, Becky, to, to the chairperson. We didn't fly it last year because of COVID. We felt like we couldn't have a gathering and so we, we didn't want to risk people's health. And um. And then uh, the last time we flew it, um, uh, Mr. Heisey uh. Came and suggested that we shouldn't fly it on that flagpole and so the town made us fly it. You know, um. On the ta, on the town hall. So we. Found a flag and flew it. We didn't get to raise the flag, which is part of the ceremony. Um, we just, it just hung there. So that was it.
If I may, Jeff, so, um. Do, how many years has the town, um. Celebrated with the LGBTQ plus community, um, the pride, progress flag. Being. On town property. Do you know?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking Hope through you. Yes, um, thank you. So, um, I believe it's been three years in a row. Uh, with the exception of COVID, the two years of during COVID pandemic.
Thank you. I would also just like to, um. Reiterate what we've. Gone over, just the fact that it is on town property. Um, I think that the honor roll is there. Um. And because the flagpole. Is part of, is, is within that, I still feel that it's on town land. Town Common, which is for. Uh, Town Common use.
Okay. Eli.
Alright, so. I'll go back to something I, I stated at the last meeting and, and something that's been stated a couple of times here. Um. Uh. Throughout the um, support that we uh, gave for putting the, the veterans honor roll in. Well, the, the statement's been made that it was assumed, there was an assumption that. Another flagpole would be erected somewhere for um, the town flagpole. If, if that's the case. It was not something that I ever recall being. Stated as a feature or a requirement. Or a request or debated by the Board of Selectmen. Or entered into any of the planning discussions around the Town Common. So. If that was an assumption on the part of the, the legion that was not communicated to the board, that was a poor assumption. I think. Um, I can definitely, I could definitely see, um. A, a reasonable long-term solution for there being a second flagpole that's on the Town Common. It could be used for, um, you know, uh, ancillary. Uh, or uh, additional. Statements of town policy. Um, but we don't have that right now. We used to because we had a town flagpole, which we actually used for this particular statement. Um. The first time it flew, it flew off the big town flagpole. So. I was a little bit taken aback when. Um, there was now opposition to the replacement. Flagpole being used for any other purpose except for the Veterans Honor Roll. And specific, very specific statements about a veteran's honor roll because I do think. That, for example, an argument could be made, a pretty strong argument that. Um, flying the LGBTQ flag on that flagpole actually does honor veterans because there are. Quite a few veterans who are otherwise marginalized within the military. Who I think deserve our respect as well and it could be stated that. This would be an expression of the town supporting those veterans. So. We have a problem. Um. There is one contingent who thinks that that flagpole should be reserved. For uh, only two flags. And there is no current provision, only an assumption of a provision. For an alternative. And. I'm pretty. I'm extremely uncomfortable with the situation and as, as it currently stands. I don't like the solution that we came up with, flying the flag as a banner off of Town Hall. That was. A forced position. Forced by obsolescence and political pressure and that we did not resolve very well. It was. It was, um. It, it, there was a lot of tension to it. And I don't think it, it served, um. The notion of bringing community get together at all. So. Uh, and I don't think we're going to resolve this. Uh, as, as a long-term solution tonight. But I think that we could start on it. I think John Round has expressed an opinion that we should put up a second flagpole on Town Common. I think if we're going to be presenting positions of policy via flags. Then that we should do it from Town Common. Flags that are, you know, part of municipal state. Which this one in my opinion is. So. I think in the long run, we probably should consider a second pole from which to. To make these position statements. But we don't have that right now. So what I think that we should do for this request. Is to go ahead and put that flag up. On the Veterans Honor Roll, recognizing. That these people. The LGBT community are in fact a part of that community as well. And that we should make a longer term plan for addressing this and any other. Uh, issues that might or that we, uh, the board or the town wishes to express through the use of flags. That are not related to veterans. On a separate flagpole. But I think that that. I hope that that would be a compromised position. That people could accept as a starting point to move us forward in this discussion. Right now, I'm, I don't see another uh, option that's going to play out very well.
Ken.
I suggest. That, um, the selectmen proclaim their support for Pride Month. Um. And that. I don't have the exact wording that. Would be needed for it, but we certainly could come up with wording between now and June first and that. Um, we support. In conjunction with our support of Gay Pride Month, that we support the raising of the progress flag on the. Flagpole on Town Common. That is government. We are. Effectively the government of the town, at least the legislative. Right, executive branch and that makes it uh, government speech. And I think. Eliminates questions of, of what the Supreme Court may or may not have decided. And shows our feeling about including everyone in our community.
John.
Yes, Jeff, um, I get, I, I get behind a motion for proclamation and for putting. The flag up this year on the current flagpole that's in the uh, in the uh, monument. Uh, and also included that motion. Uh, the town's plan to erect the flagpole somewhere on the common. So that uh, so that future, future flags uh, could be flown from that, that flagpole on. And so, so as a result, only going forward, only the American flag and the POW flag would be in the uh, in the monument area. But I would want to tie both of those together and I, I don't know, there's money involved with that, Greg. I don't know how you do that, but.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that is a motion. That that motion has too many purposes. Didn't, and it needs to be divided. I'd also like to suggest that this is being set up as an either or situation. And um. And there is another option here. Um, my concern is that we're creating a policy on the fly. Um, that we will accept. Other organizations. Um, other than governmental organizations. Representations of those organizations, um, on. The Town Common. And we'll accept them as government speech. Um, did we, did we say that this is government speech? I, I want to be very clear, although there probably be some doubt about this, that I am entirely in support of the LGBTQ community. Um. Very strongly in, in, that in my life, I've been that way. But I am very concerned. About. A loose definition of government speech. That could lead to hate groups coming and saying, how are you excluding? that could lead to hate groups coming and saying, how are you excluding us from displaying our flag on your Town Common? I don't see this as a rejection or a lack of endorsement of the LGBTQ community. I see it as something that's been brought on by the decision in Sudcliffe that has changed the game in terms of what a policy about flag use and flag displays on government property is all about. I propose that there's a third alternative, and that alternative is to fly only the American flag from the Veterans Honor Roll. And that we do that until we develop a policy, a real policy, not a pressured policy, because this decision has been one that we've noodled over in terms of flag policy for a couple of months now, and and now the pressure's on because June 1st is the beginning of Pride. I would like to see that policy developed in a way that, that has some nuance in it about, and some clear definitions about what is government speech from this town. And I really don't care what happens in Beverly or Salem or every other community in the North Shore, because they made their decisions before Sudcliffe happened. We need to make our decisions in a post-Sudcliffe environment. And I'm very concerned about opening the door to other forms of speech because we don't have a clear way of saying no. So therefore, I would propose that what we do is we eliminate all flags except for the American flag from the Town Common, that we move to follow John's suggestion to put up a second poll that becomes a poll that we can be developing a policy for while it's in process. And that in the interim, that we support the LGBTQ community by flying a flag from a temporary stand on one of the pillars of Town Hall. Now, that may seem like it's second shrift to the community. But I really am concerned about creating a policy, and we could make it really clear that this is only a temporary flagpole until we've developed a policy. Any use of the Town flagpole that's at the Honor Roll that goes beyond the American flag is the beginning of setting a policy without having properly vetted it. And I strongly object to that. So that's the direction that I would suggest we go in. And I will take comments first from the Board. John?
All right, so Jeff, are you suggesting that the LGBTQ flag be flown similarly to the way it was this, was it two years ago? Last year it was not correct.
No, I think it should be on a pole.
On a pole.
When it was, when it was hung between the pillars.
Yes.
There were problems with, with display, it was makeshift, I don't think that's a good idea. I think we should put a, put a pole up on the brickwork that can be done, and that they are, that they can have a ceremony to have the, have the progress flag flown, this is a new flag that they've developed, that they could have something happen, but, but by its very nature, we define that that is a temporary arrangement until the Town develops a policy around flag use on the Common.
Okay.
And we need time to do that. So I want to, I want to respectfully include a celebration of LGBTQ, but do it in a temporary way until we have a real policy that this town can adhere to for the flying of flags that are non-governmental flags. And that includes POW MIA. Eli?
So I don't agree with that approach. I, I understand your concerns, I think your concerns are probably a little bit overstated, I think that we would be, from what I've been told, legally in relatively good position with the statements that we have made so far around this issue. I think that a cure for us would be to develop a written policy, even if it were a couple of weeks after the fact. But if you remain concerned about it, we have on our agenda tonight policy discussion around raising and lowering municipal flags, and we would not particularly like this solution, where we can take some time to put some language into that policy, and then we can use a previous policy that we have already approved that allows us to put in effect a policy in an interim without necessarily completing the second reading. Now, that's a pretty unpleasant way to go about it, but it would comport with our policies, and it would satisfy your need for having a written policy in place ahead of whatever we're going to do. If you need to edit that policy later, you can. But I think the solution of just saying no and stripping the POW MIA flag off, frankly, is just going to piss off everybody.
That's exactly what I'm about, Eli's pissing off everybody.
Yeah.
I totally disagree with that. I think you've misread what I've said. And I think it's rushing in because we've been faced with Sudcliffe, which we didn't predict. At the same time, we had a timely request from Hope and North Shore Pride to fly this flag.
Well, that's left, and we have two options, right? We can potentially cobble together something to obtain what we think is the best compromise solution for now, or we can you know, take your approach, which I think is, I don't have quite the right word for it, but I think it goes a little bit too far in the other direction, doesn't go towards actually helping support the messages that our, our residents want to give, which just says, you know what? We're, we're concerned about potential lawsuits, so we're going to take this other King Solomon approach. And, and I don't think we need to go that way.
I, I really, again, I object to the characterization that that this is something that is a not well-thought-out approach. My own feeling is that we're not taking into consideration the implications that could come back and really hurt the LGBTQ community in our town through the petition of various groups that I can only characterize as hate groups.
But not if we have a policy in place, right?
We don't have a policy, Eli, we don't.
I, I was making the proposal to you just now, that we could take some time tonight, under our, our, under our rules. We have an agenda item that, that would allow us to.
I think, I think the, the, the policy that we were to discuss was about the display of the American flag in the Town. We did not advertise that we were going to be discussing a broader policy about various flags flying on Town Polls. That was not the advertisement in the, in the agenda.
We said raising and lowering of municipal flags. This flag would be a statement of a municipal opinion.
That's very different than a municipal flag. I'm sorry. You know, we need Alan Wilson to talk about whether it's within the scope of the agenda, and my feeling is it's not. And I also feel like we're rushing in to make something happen. And I'm trying to have something happen and not have it set us in a position where we're open to other communities, other groups that we do not want to see placing their flags in our town. As Boston has now been open.
I'd like to ask if Greg has any opinion about the, the legal position and, and the risks that you are concerned about and where we stand from his opinion, from talking to Town Council about this risk.
So I, I think that if, in particular, if you approve a proclamation declaring that the Town recognizes and supports you know, Gay Pride Month, and that as, as you show that, you, you, in that proclamation, you determine that you want to show that support, not only through the proclamation, but by flying the flag, I think that would be sufficient. Yes, is there, is there some vulnerability? Potential, there is, but I think within a month or so, even if it's three months, we have a, a much more enumerated policy regarding Town-supported events and, and, and flags that I, I think are, are risk, while not zero, I, I think personally, I would be comfortable with that. So another Town Council has has opined that obviously the easiest and least risky is to just fly the American flag. But you know, we, we don't always take the easy path or the least risky path is often, doesn't get you very far. So I think I think that you'll be on safe enough ground by proceeding as I, I just suggested.
Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. So I just wanted to clarify for your statement that you made, that you're the only town that has made this decision after the Supreme Court decision. And if I could just clarify that both Marblehead and Newburyport made the decision after the Supreme Court decision. That's all.
I have no idea what their policies are. I have no idea whether they crafted a policy or not.
I, I'm just correcting your statement, that's all I'm saying, is they made their decision after.
What goes with that, Hope, is that there is a policy that exists regarding the flying of flags on the Town Common.
I totally understand what you're saying, I was just correcting the decisions to fly the flag were made after the Supreme Court decision in those two towns. And I, again, I just want to thank everyone's hard work and and dedication to this issue tonight, thank you so much. And again, I'm presenting this as a private citizen, I'm not presenting it as, as a representative of North Shore Pride. I'm a private citizen in the Town of Manchester by the Sea, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that that we craft a proclamation in support of flying the progress flag at Town Hall during the month of June. Excuse me, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we create a proclamation in support of, of Pride Month. And that we have that proclamation ready for our meeting on the 24th. That's number one, and I need a second on that. If, if you don't second it, then we can move with whatever.
Second.
Okay. I think that's the first step in this. So is there any discussion among the Board? Okay, we're ready to vote, roll call vote, Mr. Round?
Yes.
Mr. Bowlin?
Yes.
Ms. Jakes?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. That proclamation will be prepared before the meeting on the 24th. I'd like to like a second motion that if that proclamation is made and endorsed on the 24th, that we give the LGBT community an opportunity to fly with our support a flag on Town Hall. As I've already mentioned, that would be, I'll, I'll do that in discussion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
As I've already mentioned, I would like this to be a poll. I'd like it to be on one of the columns, and I'd like it to be accessible for a process like a meeting or rally at the Town Hall to raise it. That's, any discussion?
Yeah. Have you already? I mean, talk about making decisions on the fly, have you already gone through the process of talking to DPW or whoever would actually establish that poll on Town Hall, cause it to be affixed without permanently damaging the structure to, to make it something that would actually work from a purely situational standpoint?
I've not had specific discussions with DPW about that, no.
I'm not.
If you want to, if you want to object to my proposal on an engineering ground, you can do that.
What I'm, I'm, my concern is that we're going to hope that this solution is going to be viable, and it'll be a, not a good solution because we haven't actually, you know, vetted it with the people who would try to implement it. Because we haven't actually, you know, vetted it with the people who would try to implement it. And I don't think.
So let me change the motion slightly and see whether John would agree to this. That we instruct EPW to create a flagpole mount on the column of Town Hall. And for, for our next meeting on the 24th, we will know the answer to that question.
It's all brick, but they can figure something out, I would think.
Would you accept that as a change to the motion?
Yes.
So that's the second.
And what's the time period here, Jeff? Is that the month of June?
I didn't specify a time period.
Okay.
John, do you have another question?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anne. You need to unmute yourself, please.
I disagree with that motion. I think that um, the flagpole on Town Common is the obvious place of honor. And that putting that flag on a secondary flagpole is not showing the support we should for that community.
Any other comments? I think that my response to your comment, Dan, is the proclamation is the show of support. The display of the flag is an enhancement of that support. Where the flag is displayed in terms of on the Town Hall does not, in my mind, denigrate the proclamation. The proclamation is the, the support of the select board and the town for our community of LGBTQ.
Excuse me, Jeff. Motion made and seconded. Can we vote?
Well, there's discussion after we make a vote, after we make a motion, Becky. If there's no further discussion, we can vote. No further discussion. Roll call vote. Becky.
No.
Anne.
Hell.
John.
Yes.
Eli.
No.
The chair votes yes.
May I make a motion?
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that after we review the proclamation at the May 24th meeting, that we, as a second point, have the flag flown on the town flagpole that is currently in place for the month of June in recognition of and support of Pride Month.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? John?
No, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to go with that. I was, I was okay with that right off the bat. So long was, so long as it was tied to erecting a second flagpole, I don't want to see the second flagpole get lost. But I'm confident that I will keep it high on the to-do list.
I don't accept that amendment to the motion. I have that as a, that could be a separate.
Yes, I, I understand. I was not amending it, just making a comment.
Okay, thanks.
Anne, you had your hand up?
I was going to say what Becky said, that, that the erection of a secondary pole for public speech is a totally different discussion.
Okay, so I have a comment on this, which is are we setting a precedent for groups that the select board endorses to fly a flag for a month?
Every board can make a decision and no, and, and this board can't, you know, overrule a subsequent board. This board cannot bind a subsequent board. Precedent does not apply. Precedent may shift the opinion of a board, but one board can change its mind about how it's going to manage town assets and property at will.
That's good news. I'm going to miss you, Eli. And I'm going to also suggest that flying one group's flag for a month precludes flying any other group's flag during that month. And that's a practical reality.
I think compromise requires.
There's, there's no compromise. There's no compromise here. This is 30 days flying from the flagpole that exists on Town Call. That's not a compromise. I suggested a compromise. If the board is ready to vote. Becky?
Yes.
Eli? Yes. Anne?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chair votes no. I vote no because I think that this is all premature. Obviously, the board feels differently than I do. That's fine. That's why we vote. That's why we have a democracy. The third question that veterans are going to want to know about is what is the disposition of the POW MIA flag on the honor roll? So I've made a whole lot of suggestions and I'm not getting very far, so I'd like to hear from the board. Becky.
Anne actually had her hand up before I did.
I'm sorry, I looked up and I saw your hand go up. Anne.
Through you, I would like to ask Ms. Watbuchi. I'm sorry.
I, I, I would like to hear, my, my question is directed towards the board.
Because I would like to know what her opinion is of sharing the pole with a second flag, third flag.
I'm happy to share it. We, we have done that before. When we flew it on the town flagpole. The POW flag has to be smaller, obviously, than the American flag, but societal flags can fly underneath. Underneath that, we've done that before. It's within flag etiquette.
In that case, since no one has raised the question of taking down the POW MIA flag, I think we don't need to consider that. It's not an issue.
All right, you know, that's very interesting. And you asked Watbuchi her opinion. You did not ask Mr. Heisey his opinion. I'd like to ask Mr. Heisey his opinion.
I'm a veteran.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't believe you had the POW flag on the old flagpole faith or to you, and, and the old flagpole, there was only an American flag. So there was never a third flag flying. But I, I also, I think last year, when, when Eli, you were there, I did take that POW flag down for the day. And I, I think we set a, a ruling that it would only be flying for two weeks, not the whole month last year. But anyways, so how will I feel? And again, I'm doing it as a citizen. I'm not through, I'm in, I'm a member of the American Legion, yes, but I'm a citizen and as a member of the Veterans' Honor Roll. The American flag and the POW flag to me on a Veterans' Honor Roll goes the same. But I did take it down last year for Eli, and I will take it down again, and it will stay down as long as you folks want it down. You're the governing body. You're saying you own the flagpole. To me, as a veteran, I currently, everybody that is in the military right now is flying under the American flag, whatever their gender is. So, but to me, I, I would do whatever the board wants me to do as a member of the honor roll committee.
Thank you, Bruce. Becky?
I do not think that the MIA POW flag should be taken down. I, I they're on the honor roll and I, at the honor roll, fly the flagpole, I think that we can have a third flag there following the proclamation.
Do you have other comments that you want to make? Thank you. Eli?
If it's feasible to put the, the progress flag up along with the POW MIA flag, I would pursue that option.
What's the basis of feasibility in your mind?
You know what? I'm, I'm not the person with the expertise. In this case, I'm the person with the opinion. So I would defer to the people who are actually going to implement that to see if they can do that. If they cannot, then this board will have to, or a board will have to revisit it, or for this particular case, the POW MIA flag has to come down. For that we have them all, all up there at the same time. That's, that's what I think we need to do to get to a, a reasonable solution for this year. Like I said, I think that we should be considering the, you know, an alternate flagpole for to, because we don't have enough space really for future years. This is a solution that we're trying to put together for this year.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Uh, what's the protocol with regard to the size of the flags? The US flag always have to be the largest flag or?
Yes.
Okay, and the other one can be the same or smaller? Yes, okay, I'll assume. I know the POW flag is, is much smaller than the American flag. I'm in favor of keeping it all up there, but I understand Eli's concern. We're running out of flagpole. This is not a tall flagpole, but it seems to me it should work. And this is, this is kind of a one-year fix that we can resolve our whole flag policy.
Okay. Do you have further comments, John?
No.
Okay. Hope? You need to unmute yourself, Hope, please.
Sorry, I thought I did. So I agree with Eli. It all depends on the, the height of the flagpole. And I know that that's a considerably small, shorter flagpole than we've had before. Because otherwise, the second or the progress flag will fly, you know, almost at half staff. So I would suggest that you know, we take a look through the, you said the town manages that or through the DPW or whoever who's going to put the lanyards on that to fly, to connect the flag. And if there's not enough room, then to remove the POW MIA flag. If there isn't enough room to fly the progress flight, since it, only with the clarification that it's a smaller flight pole.
Any further comments or questions about this, Fisher? So just to summarize, the board has decided tonight to have the progress flag fly from the flagpole on Town Common below the American flag and the POW MIA flag depending on space to be determined by a combination, I think, of the honor roll committee and the DPW. And that that flag will fly from June 1st to June 30th. Those are the decisions that you've made tonight.
Plus proclamation.
And a proclamation that will be occurring on the 24th.
I apologize to step in, but would that clarification be if there isn't enough room, the POW flag would be removed to make room for the progress flight?
The decision was made to fly the progress flight. So if there's not enough room, Mr. Heisey said that he would remove the, the POW MIA flag.
Thank you.
Anne?
I think we're talking about a mechanical decision. And I think the DPW is the only organization which should be involved in deciding something which is a question of physics.
Well, I disagree out of respect for the people who put together the honor roll. I think that they should, they should consult the DPW and the honor roll committee should consult. It's the honor roll committee that has put up the MIA flag. Yes.
Okay, my, my concern is that you read back something that we didn't say.
We didn't say anything about how the decision would be made. I'm making a suggestion. If you wish to put that to a motion, I invite you to do so.
Yes. I move that the decision about the feasibility of flying three flags on the short pole be given to the DPW.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question before we go?
No, we have to, we have to decide if there's a second or not. We can't go on with the discussion because there's a motion on the floor. Okay, I'm not hearing a second to your motion.
I withdraw.
Okay, Eli?
Yeah. I think I may have said DPW. I don't remember who said DPW. And as far as the flagpole is concerned. Who actually, among the town organizations, actually. Would be running the mechanical aspects of. Dealing with the flagpole. That's my question. Greg, do you? Have the answer for that one?
So I believe that, that really Bruce and his, his volunteers. Still have the, the key to the. To the door. I don't know if, I don't know if DPW has, has that key. I think Bruce could, Bruce could shed some light on that.
Chair recognizes Bruce Icy. Bruce, you need to unmute yourself, please.
Sorry. Yes, we did have the key underneath the flagpole because we were raising and lowering for funerals. And either whether it be town employees that had passed away or veterans from our community. So the, the key was underneath, I'd say, the base of the flagpole, but then it's been brought inside and given to the police department. So is it the, the lock that you need to get into to reach the flagpole? Because there's a, a single line rope ins- inside of the flagpole. That would protect it. So there is alternative keys around. I do have another one. If they can't find it in the police department, but that's where it normally is. And I will work with Sean Johnson for the flag. There is a question about with the three flags on the flagpole that it might run into the light. So we may have to take the POW flag down.
There's also a question if the flag had to be lowered for. That's gonna, had to be lowered for gas. The, what would happen with that?
Well, you won't be able to lower what you would normally do is, which is half staff or half mass. So you could not do that. You would have to bring it down a little bit because otherwise the flags are going to be down. On the base and someone could reach up and take that flag down. And that's the whole in purpose of having the rope with a lockbox so you don't have people stealing your flags. So. But it would, it would have to be something we would either lower a little bit in honor of that particular, particular person. Whether it be from the town or a veteran. So. We'd have to make another proclamation. I don't know, I don't know. Just, it would have to, we'd have to figure it out. John, okay?
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Eli?
Yeah. And I have a recommendation. I think that. We've stated. What we want pretty clearly. I think Bruce has understood that. And he's. You know. An honorable person and will support. What we've asked here tonight. May not agree with all of it. But he will do it. And I think that we should not try to micromanage this at this point. And Bruce and. Hope will execute what we want.
Like I said, that, that my comments about Bruce being involved in this is that the POW MIA flag is the property of the Legion. And I wanted to be treating that with respect and their ownership. So. I agree with you, Eli, that. This now needs to be worked out among the parties. Hope, your hand is up.
So am I, am I hearing that? I'm sorry, the decision about whether to remove the POW flag will now be made between Bruce and myself? In agreement?
I think that that decision should be Bruce's. It's his flag.
But Bruce is clearly in opposition of, publicly today, in opposition of flying that flag, so.
It's still, it's still his flag, and he wants to fly respectfully. I think that, I think that we should leave it up to him.
I believe it's the Legion's flag, and I'm a member of the American Legion post, so could we say that it's my flag as well?
Why don't we say that it's up to the Legion since they own the flag? Okay?
So it's up to the Legion to, I just want clarification. The Legion will decide whether or not the progress flag. Gets flown below.
No. No. What I'm suggesting is that we treat the Legion's. Flag with respect, as much respect as we treat the progress flag. And hopefully with as much respect as we treat the American flag, which is at the top of the poll. And I want to include the Legion's input on what happens with that flag. As part of. The way that it's managed.
I understand input. I'm just asking about decision.
At this point, the Board of Selectmen has voted, and the town manager would implement the decision.
Okay, I, I didn't hear that, but maybe I missed it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll repeat it. At this point, the Select Board has voted. To have the progress flag fly on that pole. And I leave it in the hands of the town administrator to work out the details with the parties. The guidance of the board, the Select Board has been made, so. I think that we've done as much as we can with this particular situation. Hope you still have your hand up. Did you want to add to what you said? Thank you. There's one more matter that's on the agenda tonight that we have not addressed, which is the Select Board Policies Continued Discussion. The first of which is around raising and lowering town and municipal flags. I'd leave it up to Ann to decide whether she wants to pursue that tonight. Or complete our agenda.
I think. I'm not prepared to take on the flag, but there was also, there's also a policy about appointments. And I would like to hear from the other people on the board. The issue with that policy is not with the appointments per se, although there's some question about whether everyone appointed must be a Manchester resident. It's with the term limits, which we do not currently follow. I have heard from Carl Doan and. Jack Burke and. Steve. Gage. It's late.
Yes.
It is generally agreed that we do not follow those. We allow people to serve multiple terms. Well beyond two for a three-year appointment. The. The, a purpose of the policy is, of that policy was to have turnover in the boards. Several people. Two people mentioned that, that finding people for the boards is difficult and. Rejecting people who are active and effective on the boards. Is probably not the best policy. And with that introduction, I would like to hear from. Other board members or. Anyone else. Who has an opinion. And then I will try and rewrite that policy.
Sarah Milch?
I've been on the Finance Committee since 2011, but I'm a moderator appointment. Maury Creighton has been on there longer than I have, so you have not enforced this policy for more than 10 years.
I, I can state from, from conversations that I've had with longtime board members of various boards. That this policy, which was originally adopted in 1989. Was no longer being followed. Immediately. Carl Doan was appointed to the Harvard Advisory Committee in 1990 and served until 2002. And so right out of the, right out of the box, the Board of Selectmen at that time did not follow this policy that they had made.
Right, and, and so I want to add that the ZBA terms used to be five years. They're now three. We went for probably four or five years where we could not find enough members. Finance Committee has been short-staffed. So my suggestion is if you're going to implement, re-implement some type of a term policy. That you need to have a procedure to come up with more volunteers because they just don't exist. Thank you.
Eli?
Yeah, I will. Echo what. Sarah Milch just said, I don't think. The term limits serve us right now. If somebody asked me to enforce them, I would do my best to find a way around it. Mostly probably by changing this policy as rapidly as I could because we'd lose. Some of the most qualified people that we have, you know, it'd be pretty hard to get them back. So, yeah, we need to change the policy. Now. An orthogonal issue. Is when you actually have somebody year over year who. Stays on the board. There's the creeping sensation that that person needs to not be on that board anymore, but that's actually. Matter of the. Board of Selectmen to deal with. Painful decision, but it's not really a policy issue.
John?
Yeah, Jeff, I've had some experience in this. My initial reaction is, is we should get rid of it because it's so hard to get people. I'd be interested in making a survey of the boards and finding out how many people have been on these boards more than six years. I suspect it's a significant number.
That's something that Ann was doing in contacting Carl.
Is that right? Okay. Yeah, it's not hard to do, but a little tedious. But I'm, I'm curious, curious about that. And, and for some of these boards, it, it takes you several years to figure out what's going on anyway. And I, I agree with Eli's comments that, you know, in some instances, four plus, some of these. Which require either background, or you've got to get up to speed. It may, may take four years to figure out exactly what the story is, and then you'd like to keep that person around for a while, so. I, I would not be averse to perhaps, on a yearly basis, getting a list of people who have. Over six years of experience and maybe just providing that to the, to the selectmen. Just to see what the story is. I mean, we know who all, most of these folks are, and I'm just. I'd be interested what the story is, and maybe we should approach some of those committee chairs who have people that have been there for a long time and say, what do you think? But. I think we need a little bit more information before we decide exactly what the story is here.
Becky?
I agree with Eli. I don't. I, I think in historically speaking, we just don't adhere to the term limits. Out of necessity. I do think that. Members of boards and committees should be town residents. Thank you.
Yeah?
Oh, I can get the information on who's been on the board for more than six years from the town reports. The town, the committee members, the committee chairs are very busy people. And I think just asking, I felt that I was imposing on them, just asking the first question, which is, what is their opinion? So I will. Go into my last 10 years of town reports and figure out who's been around for a long time. And as for the non-town residents, I don't know that it's still the case. But at one point, it was impossible to find someone for the Board of Assessors. Who had the appropriate qualifications and a former town resident was brought in so that that board was complete. That's why I asked, mentioned that.
Eli?
Yeah, comments on two things. First. As far as the tenure of appointments and the term limits is a concern, just, I was just looking, rereading the language on it. It's kind of funny. It actually says. To provide opportunities fresh-faced from time to time while ensuring all boards, committees, and commissions are served by experienced men and women, it is desirable, but not mandatory, to limit terms of membership. So. Our term limits clause is bizarrely weak. So I think we could skip it altogether without a, a much problem. But as far as the Board of Assessors and the. Requirement that they be Manchester residents. Item five in the policy says, "The selectmen shall make exceptions to these rules only under extraordinary circumstances." And make the argument that potentially for the Board of Assessors. That would be one of those extraordinary circumstances where we really needed somebody with a particular experience. And, and a very specific. Argument would be made. I could see that potentially being. Gradually getting bigger and becoming problematic, but. I think that's a, a pretty special case.
So, and you asked for some input from the board about this in terms of. Section two and whether it should be modified or eliminated. Do you feel like you have that? I couldn't hear you. You're muted.
Yep. It gets to be 9:30 and I forget to unmute myself. Yes, I have the, I have what I need. I think this policy is not something we need to deal with, with great urgency. So I would prefer not to do an edit online. But rather present it back to you at our next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Which is to say not on the 24th.
Exactly. Yes, understood. Becky?
I just want to retract what I said about. Being citizen of Manchester in light of other things that have been said. Thank you.
The only comment I have about this is actually in terms of. Removal of a person from a board. And the only. The only mention of that in this is under attendance. And that's missing more than half of the meetings. And that's missing more than half of the meetings over a six-month period. And the question that I would raise to the board is whether we need to modify that in some way. Or whether there's any other place in policies that I'm, I'm not aware of. Where if there's a problem with a member of a board who is an appointee of this board, of the Select Board, that provides for a procedure for their due process remove. I think we've got, we, we can run into issues with a board member that don't rise to this standard, which is a pretty high standard. And the question is, how do we deal with those issues? But I don't want to deal with that tonight. I think we need to, to continue to think about that in terms of the way we can resolve those issues. Eli, if you're awake enough to make a comment on that, I would really appreciate it because you know, the factor is that this is, this evening is Eli's last meeting as a select person, as a select man, as a Select Board member. So get them while you can. Do you have anything you want to comment about that last issue?
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. It probably would be worthwhile adding a sentence in there. Making it clear that the Board of Selectmen can, in fact, well, you know, yank somebody off the board if they're misbehaving. And that's, that's pretty rare, but people should understand that they positions on those boards are by, are at the will of the Board Selectmen.
See, I would wonder whether the nice polite people in 1991 who signed off on this, an 89 policy that was signed off in 91, were, were looking at a way of churning the boards, not just so you get fresh faces in there, but so that you could remove stale faces. So that's an interesting issue. Leave it for tonight. Ann said she had what she needed. Is there any other business that we have not covered that? Any other matters that have not been reasonably anticipated by the chair? Okay.
Move to adjourn. Second. Oops, sorry.
I was about to say something when you made your motion. So can you hold your motion for a second?
I would be delighted to hold my motion.
Just for a second. As, as a board, I think we all want to thank Eli for his service. We've done it before. We did it at a town meeting. But this is it. Get, he's out of here. And he's got a big grin on his face. And I wish him very well. I hope he takes a year off and gets his, his breath back and jumps back in, not with the Board of Selectmen necessarily, but with the expertise that he has. It's going to be really sad to have the town lose that.
But I have his telephone number.
Yeah, I think we all have his number. Sorry. I'm sorry, Eli. Did you, did you say something?
Yeah, I did. So thank you. Despite the, some of the difficult discussions, it's been an honor and I appreciate the professionalism of a lot of the people in town. I certainly don't regret my decision to have stepped up.
Or, or your decision to step down?
No, not that. And, and thank you all for continuing to serve and you'll definitely see me around.
Thank you, Eli. Okay, Ann, let it fly.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Whoa.
I should have let you. Why don't I withdraw my motion and Eli?
No, it's done. It's done.
Okay.
Uh, broke all vote. Becky?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
John?
Yes, and thank you, Eli.
No, he's no longer a selectman.
Yes, he is.
Eli?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Eli. The chair votes yes. Good night, everybody. And thank you to Hope and to Bruce Heisey and all those who participated in our long deliberation over the flags. I appreciate all the input that we had and that we came to a conclusion. So thank you. Good night.
Thank you for your leadership. Good night.